If the council finds it that it's not wanting to do the adjustment and wants to buy the unspent salary, then what it does is it keeps us from recruiting and filling positions that it was intended for and also, you know, for staffing needs that we currently have, the immediate additional money is why we need this adjustment. But if we go forward with the council, if the council sort of chooses not doing this special adjustment, we'll take it out of the unfilled position and have to continue operating as coming back for more additional needs.
The money doesn't go away from March on. The money, actually, year-to-date, you've saved more than seventy thousand dollars in salary and benefits. That money does not go away. It's there. If the chief has somebody that can start tomorrow, the money is there and you've more than covered the seventy thousand dollars. So I don't understand the comment that says that, well, we need to, we'd like to hold the money and have the extra seventy thousand dollars so that we can recruit for the people. You have the money to recruit for the people. It's been in the budget since January 1st at forty thousand dollars a year.
Question, please. Teresa, can, I didn't quite, sorry, I didn't quite understand what you meant. You said that George was okay with making the application of the unspent funds to cover the seven thousand, is that right?
The unspent salary.
The unspent salary.
Yeah.
Which-
To cover the adjustment.
Which is unspent because we haven't hired.
Correct.
But if we use that to cover this, would that delay us in filling those positions in any way?
It could, only because the operation of the expenditures, we're taking what we would have for them to augment over, more overtime staffing needs, temporary help. We've needed a big amount of temporary help. And what we did through the budget processes, we verified before we came to verify, asked for adjustments to the appropriations, we took within different line items to ensure that maybe we can move money around as funding within the department. And we did do that. At one point, the department was at a hundred and forty-one thousand, so we were able to find just seventy-one thousand out of the department expenditures to come up to where we only need seventy thousand to ninety-eight. And that's because we tried to keep that portion in there for the department's recruiting needs. We have overtime issues because there's people out that can't work, and so we need to have minimum staffing levels. And when that takes place, most of the time we need overtime because we don't have the additional, the staffing that can do a full schedule. So it's kind of trying to find our, manage our resources the best we can to ensure that, you know, we don't want to go over budget, but at the same time, we want to, you know, have a department that's fully staffed, that's capable down the line to mitigate any changes of, you know, if someone's out for an extended period of time, we have coverage. And right now, we kind of don't have that.
How can you not hire people?
Excuse me. No. Excuse me. Yeah, thank you very much. So I don't know if anybody reads the almanac, the blogs, the police blotter, and know how busy our department has been lately. And we are understaffed, and I believe that our chief is out there beating the bushes, getting new recruits in, but it takes a long time. It takes a lot of vetting of the officers to get the highest quality. And just last month, we swore in an officer with years of experience, but that took a long time to get. I don't know why we want to hamstring this department by nitpicking over this. I think that the amount of overtime that is being logged to deal with the graffiti over in Lindenwood, which is abhorrent, which is very scary, to chase down the burglars that are breaking into our cars and our homes in Selby Lane area to protect our citizens and to not make this budget adjustment at this time just by saying that, well, you know, they've got it and we'll do it later if we need it and stuff. I just don't, I just don't think that that is the right approach for this council to take. I think we need to support our police department in the most effective way, and I just don't think that this is necessary. I think we should accept this adjustment.
I think that we're getting to a point where we're spending a lot of money on overtime. The chief's getting, having some difficulty recruiting. I would hate to have us use this, these, the funds that are in play, the eighty thousand, to shift it over to cover this cost, and then the chief finds somebody that can recruit and reduce our potential overtime costs and backfill a position. And having a delay because he has to come back out to us to fill that spot, it doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, I'm inclined to say that I'm in favor of personally both of the amendments here and moving forward and, go, Mr. DeGoy. Your thoughts on this?
We have a public comment?
Yeah.
Well, I think that the most important thing for the department is to find the quality of people that we found recently with the officer that we swore in last month. That is the most important thing for this department. Clearly, there are plenty of challenges that we have in the community with respect to community policing and, as we can see, I mean, the department's had its hands full with a whole variety of issues, and I think they're doing a great job, but I think the most important thing for this department is to fill these open positions. So I don't want to do anything that would hamstring the department, and I'm not suggesting that you would with your comments, Bill, but I don't, I want to make sure we don't do anything that would limit the department's ability to recruit to fill those positions. I frankly don't understand how using money that hasn't been spent, that was set aside for salaries, to cover this might limit us in our ability to recruit, but if it would, I don't want to use it because the most important, I am absolutely certain that the most important thing for us is to fill these positions.
Can I ask the chief for-
Can I, I think that if I could-
Please.
All right, there's the comments that have been made so far, except for yours. I think there's a misunderstanding. It is forty thousand dollars a month that was starting in January that has been unspent, and it's there every month. If the chief hires somebody tomorrow, that money is there today, and it's there carrying all the way forward for those two officers. In January and in February, because we're almost done with February, it's next month is over, next week it's over, all right? We have not filled those positions. That money has gone unspent. During that period of time, the chief has spent for overtime and some ancillary things, recruitment costs, and there were some vehicle repairs in there, minor. He spent an additional seven thousand, seventy thousand dollars. And my point is that we have in the budget already unspent that won't be spent, eighty thousand dollars, and that more than covers the seventy thousand. Now, when he hires these extra people, they'll be the forty thousand dollars a month. If they come tomorrow, they'll be there. The money is not being taken away, and my comment was, we should just reallocate what's there as opposed to adding more, adding another seventy thousand when there's already eighty thousand sitting there. It's not restricting him. I take exception to the comment that I'm restricting our officers and restricting the chief from being able to do his job with all the things that are going on. No one has said that, okay? But what I am saying is the budget has currently an underrun of eighty thousand dollars. The chief is saying, I've had unexpected expenses because I haven't been able to fill those spaces and for some other things, extra expenses of seventy thousand. Can I have another seventy thousand, please? And they, and I just say I don't see a need to give another seventy thousand because we have eighty thousand currently unspent there. So that's ten thousand dollars extra. Adding another seventy thousand doesn't make any sense.
Chief, do you want to make any comment?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I think it's a matter of strategy that the finance director and I have discussed with city manager, and it doesn't mean that it's, if it's allotted, it's going to be spent. It's also very important to understand that when we're talking about vacancies, we're not really talking about vacancies. We're talking about as many as four people, sometimes five, of long-term disability. We're still paying their salaries and we're still backfilling with the few employees we have on overtime. So there's not necessarily a employee salary savings when we talk about vacancies because we're talking about people that we have to carry on our boat. They're on forty-eight, fifty, long-term disability or long-term emergency leave. And we are so thin to begin with, we don't have the folks to cover that. We have to have people come in on overtime. With respects to recruiting, council member Rick DeGoy was absolutely right. We're not going to take second best, and we probably look at twenty-five candidates to find, you know, to get one person at the end of the tunnel to hire, and we're not the only agency fishing out of that same pool. So it's a difficult time right now, and for a small agency to have three, four, five vacancies at a time, it's kind of a moving target sometimes. It's difficult. And I think, you know, I don't think as I have money, we're going to spend it, but we want to make sure that we set ourselves up for success and that we need to, when we have to move money around, and I think it's one of the strategy, and Robert, if you want to comment a little more on that, please do, but the, it's not as if there's a lot of salary savings because of vacancies.
No, and Chief, Frank is correct. We have a budget of salaries, but, you know, when people are on disability, you're still paying them, plus you're paying somebody else. And we're trying to get ahead of the curve, and what we, when we came to the council last year for this budget is these additional positions, and it was something that's been ongoing. So before we can hire somebody, and we have them now in anticipation for this new, for January budget of getting these salaries, someone goes out on leave, and so that person ends up not being that new employee, but ends up being that person that covers the person, the one that's on leave. And so that's our concern, our dilemma, and we do. We try to verify and make sure that we can take, you know, we're fiscal, we're responsible with our budgets. Because we have a budget, we try not to go out there and say, okay, we have five million dollars, just make sure we go spend it, you know, five million dollars. We're trying to make sure that that's, that those resources are available for operations and if that we need it. But that's not to say that we're going to go and say, okay, we got to make sure we spend all of this. It's something that we reevaluate every year. We evaluate monthly with our departments to ensure that, you know, we're on track, you know, as long as if we meet the budget, well, hey, we had to do what we had to do. But our anticipation is not to spend all of it. And so that's where we're at at this position, but just because we're going to request of an amendment doesn't mean that we're going to go and spend it all. It's another app, it's a tool for us to continue to operate without having to come back every other month saying, you know, we need more money.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the mid-year budget review for the general fund fiscal year 2013, 2014, and adopt the tax resolution authorizing the budget amendment for adjustments.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, for the, I vote yes for the building department, and as I stated, I don't see a need for the seventy thousand additional that hasn't been spent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay.
Just to clarify, that is a no vote. The votes are the same resolution, but I'll clarify in a minute.
Thanks. Perfect. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number nineteen, maintenance, park maintenance oversight over Palm Park. I think Mike's going to step in first. Steve?
Yes, may I release members of the city council. This item asks for city council approval to hire additional contract staff to increase oversight and improve park maintenance activities at Palm Park. After November 2013 meeting, city council approved a menu of maintenance items to improve the appearance and conditions of the street broadway in the park. One of the items was the addition of staff trained and experienced to improve the appearance and addition of the landscape of Palm Park. In discussions with the town's contract maintenance provider, staff has determined that MCE has a qualified person with extensive park maintenance and landscape experience to perform the desired functions. This proposal was discussed at the DeBury Fifth meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. As a result of that, the commission supports the use of MCE, specifically Mr. Ed Murdock to serve in the role of head park gardener, and Mr. Murdock's resume is attached as part of your staff report this evening. Mr. Murdock has thirty-nine years' experience performing and managing the maintenance of landscape and landscaping of public parks for numerous rural and California cities. He is a ISA certified arborist and is a California certified pest control advisor and qualified applicator. If approved by city council, the MCE contract will be increased by thirteen thousand dollars. This will provide approximately fifty hours of service per month between now and the end of June. I conclude my presentation.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mike. Any questions from council?
So Mike, do you think that fifty hours per month is going to make a difference?
Steve, and I'm here speaking for Steve, but yes, Steve feels that, you know, that's about twelve hours per week, and, you know, we do believe that that additional oversight with this experience, that it will provide improvements, but that's one of the things that, you know, over the next three or four months, we can see, and if it isn't adequate, we can address that come the next fiscal year.
Has he been currently working as a, you know, MCE supervisor or anything for the staff over there now?
No, no. Mr. Murdock would be new addition to the staff here at the-
Here now.
And so his response was, would be to kind of do general oversight and coordination of?
Exactly, you know, to review the existing maintenance, to actually perform some of the maintenance functions, you know, as necessary. So, you know, the plan is to, you know, utilize them to the maximum ability of that twelve hours per week.
Hands-on as well as supervisory?
Absolutely, yes.
And strap on his clippers?
Suit belt.
Mr. Murdock is here this evening, so-
Oh, good.
Yes, but no, Mr. Murdock is very willing and to get his hands dirty, absolutely.
Perfect. Councilor Whitaker?
Yeah, if I remember right, Mike, what Steve said was most important is we had somebody that would come to the park regularly and make a hit list and then make sure that the hit list got actioned appropriately and the maintenance was advised. So his role, from what I understood from the last discussion, was going to be more of, you know, reviewing what's there, reviewing the type of plants we had, then coming up with an action plan, and then putting the staff that we have there that we just augment it on a regular rotating process so that everything is kept up to the right standards.
And that's correct. I mean, what we believe we're going to get here is a keener eye and a more focused-
Specialist, yeah.
Yes.
Councilor DuMont, vice mayor.
Let's see, so the proposal is to fill this slot through July, June 30th, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then is it to bid the position for the following year?
No, actually, and the reason it would be through the end of June is because that is when the current contract with the MCE expires. And so over the next, you know, month or two, staff will be coming forward with an RFP to go out through another, a new competitive process for contract maintenance.
For, for all of the contract maintenance that MCE currently does?
That is correct.
And this, would this position be included in that general RFP then, or would this be dealt with separately?
No, this would be part of that general RFP.
Mike, the one reason, one of the reasons why we're sitting here today is because we got kind of focused on master gardener, and this position's more like a head park gardener, and our Parks Committee has kind of cleared us on that.
Yes, and this is where I'm certainly not, you know, very knowledgeable about this, but as stated in your report, the term master gardener is really kind of specific to a specific program from UC Berkeley that is really focused on more of volunteerism. And that was discussed at the Parks and Parks Commission, and I believe the commission felt that, you know, what's really needed is, you know, really not a volunteer, but a more, you know, someone who is going to be paid and who is going to be able to commit the time that was necessary.
He's an arborist as well.
That's correct.
He's an arborist as well, okay. Bob, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I do. I think that the knowledge to plant things and determine what is needed so that the plants are in their best shape doesn't exist at a level that we're going to get the park to look the way I think it should look. It just isn't there.
Bob, we're going to record all this. If you come up and talk on the microphone, it'll be on the record, otherwise we don't pick it up.
I didn't know it was going to be recorded.
You have very important things to say.
You would have worn a tie if you-
Yep. I think that we don't have the knowledge in the town to handle the various types of things we try and grow there and to plant things properly from the beginning. And we are overwatering, underwatering, not using sometimes the proper fertilizer, and it's not because people aren't working hard, the people we have there, that's not the reason. The reason is we don't understand enough about how to get this park looking better and how to get the plants to thrive. And I don't think they're in very shape, frankly, and I think that we can make this park really a beautiful place, but it's going to take more knowledge than we have, and somebody's going to have to be there going, that's not the way you do that. This has to be changed and not getting the right something. Don't plant that there, it'll never grow there. And items just like that, with that kind of knowledge, I think it'll make a huge difference to the park. I'm very excited about what this park can look like in two or three years.
Perfect, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. All right. Any other public comments?
We hear from the master-
Oh, if he'd like to come up and introduce himself and say hello and make any comments to us, we'd love to hear you.
Good evening. Again, my name's Ed Murdock with MCE Corporation, and I'm just looking forward to working with city staff and then the committee that the city council has already appointed. So I think it'd be a fun opportunity for me, and I had a chance to tour the site this afternoon before the city council meeting. And the gentleman that spoke just before me is absolutely right. There's a lot of room for improvement, but it's improvement that's certainly dual. So again, it's going to be a fun task for me.
Councilor DuMont.
Do you feel like there are things that you can do that are measurable in this short period of time between now and the end of-
I would think so. I think that we can look at water use, proper water application, precipitation rates are all messed up in the park. We have dry areas, we have really wet areas. There's some soil analysis and compatibility tests that really need to be performed and performed, and there's some of the pruning techniques I'm really, there's lots of room for improvement with that as well. So, yeah, I think that within six to eight week period of time, I think we'll start seeing some improvements in the site.
Spring is coming too.
Yeah.
That always makes it look better, so.
Don't blame anything-
You're riding the wave a little bit.
Don't blame it on the drought. Any other questions?
Nope.
We're good. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing that, we're going to go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to council members. I think we're probably all here pretty comfortable with moving forward. It sounds like a, you know, staff recommendation seems reasonable to, I think, everybody here, and I don't think we need to motion this. So, please, council vice mayor, go ahead.
I was an observer at the park mission meeting this last month where this was discussed in great detail, and there was difference of opinion as to exactly what we needed in the park. I think that, and the commission ultimately agreed to support Steve's recommendation and to go forward and hire Mr. Murdock, which is obviously the staff proposal, which I I do have a concern, which is I share what Bob said about a really focused need to improve the quality of the planting in the park, and I am certain that there are watering management issues that are really important as well as soil analysis to determine the proper plants in certain regions of the park because there are microclimates in the park. And I know that the MCE contract is going to be up for renewal. My concern is that I'd really like to see this position, which the way that I think that the commission articulated it, and I thought they had a very thorough discussion of this, is that we need an onsite gardener in the park who really understands gardening, and I thought that the direction where the commission was going was as a full-time position. I think we're going to have this good opportunity to see how we can do between now and June 30, which is great. I would like to see this position bid separately from the general MCE contract. I really think we need to pay attention to the park, and I think we're going to need to have a discussion, and I'm certain we will, about budget improvements to help make that happen, because when we're talking about things like soil analysis and response to that soil analysis, we've got to make sure we have the budget to do everything that we want to do. And I'm not certain that we have that in the current budget, but certainly we can address that and, of course, the budget.
So Wyatt, could we, Vice Mayor and Mike and MCE, could we ask that one of the things that Ed does over the next month or two is to actually give us a project plan of specifically, not only what needs to get done, but your assessment as to what we really need, how much time we would need somebody with your qualifications, you know, to help us gauge what we need to put into the RFP, because we have a lot of master gardeners around and they all have their own opinion, but, and as one of the things we talked about, is that we would like, we need somebody here on a constant basis checking up the same person, because a lot of people have different opinions and we can't have a rotating opinion. So could, Mike, do you think that one of the things we could ask for is a report as to what the resource requirement would be moving forward in the new contract?
Yes, and-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
In a perfect world, that's probably a pretty good suggestion, but in this world, that would disqualify MCE from bidding on the contract. You can't, and the concept is if you create the RFP, you can gerrymander it to where it favors you, and that's an inappropriate conflict that we can't allow. So they can certainly do the work, and they can certainly say what needs to be done in the future, but they can't set themselves up to be in a favorable position, and that's, from what you just said, that could work out that way.
So could you change it to say, give us an assessment of your opinion of areas of need in the park?
Sure.
I thought that's what he was going to hire to do.
Yes.
I think we just would like to have some professional input, right?
My idea.
It has nothing to do with the RFP.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So based on the council discussion here, what we want to do is over the next six to eight weeks, is one of the first tasks is we'll ask Mr. Murdock to do that assessment, to develop a work program and recommendations with regards to, you know, adjustments to maintenance activities and other, you know, operational improvements that we will bring back to the council as part of the FY 2014-15 operating budget discussions.
Right. And that statement with the emphasis that Bob had mentioned, maybe some- some idea of a feeding schedule so that we're properly feeding our rosers.
Can I comment, please? Yeah, I would, I would say to do that punch list, not just for the next fiscal year. I mean, there's really both what can be accomplished between now and June thirtieth. Because as he mentioned, there are some things that he can do. And I'd love to see some improvement between now and June thirtieth, as well as a more comprehensive punch list of the various kinds of things that he believes needs to be done over the next year. So we can take that into consideration in the course of our budget discussions.
Perfect. Thank you. Is that, is that good for you, Mike?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Perfect. I think it looks like we're doing another dance here. We're going to move on to item number twenty. Approval of the design contract with the Graves and Ferguson Associates for the Marsh Road, Tainan Mall, Community Director, Mike Moswagie.
Yes, Mayor, we, some members of the city council. This item seeks authorization for the city manager to execute an engineering design contract with Big-